No, I'm not saying the district, I'm saying the board.
Well, I thought you were going to come out and say that.
It doesn't change.
Have a northern throat.
You want to raise that some more by a little?
Why do you think every rich person that lives here is moving?
Okay, we'll call the meeting in order, we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A public comment on agenda items only?
Don't you want to be a woman?
Here.
Dolph, here, Philip Fos.
Here.
R.B., here, Kenders.
Here.
Clarence.
Here.
Novy.
Here.
And you then are a student.
Okay, a public comment on agenda items only? Superintendent's report?
Under superintendent's report for next week, I will have a couple of congratulations. We will congratulate our November cougars of the month in grades five, six, seven, and eight. We will congratulate our four teaching staff who have received donors choose grants. We will do congratulations for our five recipients of the great idea grants. We will do a congratulations for a Chevron grant and also for a field trip to the Science Center, which was grant funded. I do not have any informational items this evening. We will have the audit presentation this evening, and then next week, we will have two other presentations. One for the school award recognition month, and then the resolution that goes along with that. But for tonight, I'll turn the program over to Jim, who can introduce our audit presenters. Mr. Meyer.
Thank you. With us tonight is Jared Ewing and George.
Jerziewicz.
Jerziewicz. From, I'm sorry, Zokowski-Axterrod. They completed the audit for fiscal year end in June 2019, and I'm going to ask George to speak to the audit. The members of the board received an audit, copied the audit via email on Friday, so they had time to review the audit. After tonight's board meeting and prior to Friday, upon acceptance of the board, this audit will be posted on the website for the public to view.
So like you said, my name is George Jerziewicz. I'm a supervisor at Zokowski-Axterrod, and we're going to perform the audit this year. And so first, if you want to jump to the third slide there, you'll find our contact information. Jared Ewing, he was the engagement principal. George Jerziewicz, once again, that's me. And then Corinne Johnson, that's the engagement partner. If anyone has any questions about anything, you can feel free to give us a call, send us an email, we'll get back to you as soon as we can. So if you want to take a look at the fourth slide here, this is basically how districts' financial statements are organized. You have management's discussion and analysis, which is basically management's discussion on what occurred during the year, as well as significant year-to-year differences. Then you have the basic financial statements, which are the government-wide financial statements, the fund financial statements, and then the notes to the financial statements. And finally, we have certain required supplemental information. So beginning with the financial statement audit, you'll find the auditor's report on the financial statements on pages one to two. So our audit was performed in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America, as well as government auditing standards. And if you look at the bottom of the first page, you'll see we are expressing an unmodified opinion. This is the best opinion that, you know, you could possibly receive. It's basically saying that, you know, your statements are presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, with no audit findings. So in other words, everything is presented just as it should be. So the management's discussion and analysis is on pages three through eleven. And then on pages twelve and thirteen, we have the government-wide financial statements. So if you took, take a look at page twelve, this is the statement of net position. The district's total assets for the year were about thirty-two point five million. We have deferred inflows of resources, which were about seven point six million. And then we have total liabilities of about ninety-four point nine million, and total deferred inflows of resources of two point three million. If you look at the bottom of this page, you'll see the district's total net position was a negative fifty-seven point one million, which is split in three categories, which are net investment, capital assets, amounts restricted for capital projects, and then an unrestricted portion of net position. So if we move on to page thirteen of the report, this is the statement of activities, which shows you the district's district-wide revenues and expenses. And so we take a look at the third line from the bottom, we find the change in net position. Basically, what this is saying is that for governmental activities, revenues exceeded expenditures by forty-five thousand two hundred and fifteen, and for business-type activities, expenditures exceeded revenues by eight thousand five hundred and ninety-five, for a total increase in district net position, or a district net position of thirty-six thousand six hundred and twenty. So now if you look at page fourteen, this begins the fund financial statements. These statements are a little bit easier to look and understand, they're basically the operations of the district's individual funds. So first, we have the governmental funds, which are your general fund and capital projects fund. Together, they had a combined total assets of about seven point nine million, total liabilities of about four point three million, deferred inflows of resources of seven point nine, total liabilities of about four point three million, deferred inflows of one point nine million, and total fund balances of one point six million. So again, similar to net position, you'll see we're breaking up fund balance into certain categories, non-spendable, restricted, and then an unassigned amount of about one point one million. So moving on to page sixteen, this is the statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in fund balances for its governmental funds. So total revenues were about thirty-three point six million, and total expenditures were about forty-nine point seven million. Moving down the statement, under the other financing sources and uses category, you'll see that under the capital projects column, we're showing some details about the current year bond issue. And so the sale of bonds was fourteen million six hundred and five thousand. The bond premium was eight hundred thirty-one, one seventy-four, and the bond discount was thirty-two thousand nine hundred and sixty. And so the total other financing sources and uses came to about fifteen point three million. Now we see our net change in fund balance, where revenues exceeded expenditures in the general fund by one hundred and fifty-four thousand four hundred and ninety-five, and expenditures exceeded revenues in the capital projects fund by eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand three hundred and four. Now, the remainder of the fund financial statements are comprised of the food service fund, which are on pages eighteen through twenty, and the fiduciary fund statements on pages twenty-one through twenty-two. And so I'd just like to briefly point out pages fifteen and seventeen, not going to go into any detail about this, but basically, these pages spell out what the differences are between the fund-level statements and the government-wide level statements. So again, if anyone has any questions or any, anything specific, you can give me an email, give me a call, and I'll get back to you. So on pages twenty-three through fifty, we have the notes of the financial statements. Here, you can find information on the district's accounting policies, and further information on things like capital assets, bonds payable on the district's pension, and OPEP liabilities. If you turn to page thirty-one and take a look near the bottom, you'll see that the district adopted two new accounting standards, that's GASB eighty-three and GASB eighty-eight. However, as we know here, because these standards do not apply to any of the district's current operations, these standards have no effect on this year's financial statements. So on, beginning on page fifty-one now, you'll find the required supplementary information. The first one here on page fifty-one is the budget versus actual comparison for the general fund, where the total excess of revenues over expenditures is coming in at about one hundred and seventy-five thousand over the budgeted amount. The remainder of the required supplementary information is related to required schedules for the district's pension and OPEP liabilities. So let's go ahead and move on to the single audit. And there are two reports that we issued with the single audit. One is in accordance with government auditing standards on internal control, and one issued in accordance with uniform guidance on compliance, internal control, and the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. So these reports can be filed on pages three through seven of the single audit report, and on those reports, we're reporting that there were no deficiencies in internal control, and that the schedule of expenditures of federal awards is fairly stated in all material respects, so once again, there are no issues. If you turn to page eight, nine of the report, you'll find the schedule of expenditures of federal awards, which is showing us all of the district's federal funding and the expenditures of that funding. So at the bottom of page nine, the total federal funding received was around one, is it page six?
No.
Oh, page nine, okay. Was around one point five million. And the revenue recognized, as well as the related expenditures, were also, as expected, around one point five million. And so the last thing I want to point out about the single audit, if you will flip to the last page, this is the status of prior year audit findings. Remember, last year we had issues, there were some journal entries being posted incorrectly. I just wanted to say that your new business manager, Jim Mayer, really did an excellent job of resolving this issue, putting a plan in place to ensure that all journal entries are posted correctly in the future. And so, so in closing, I'd just like to thank Jim, as well as the, you know, the entire business office staff. Everyone really did a fantastic job of answering my questions and getting me what I need in a timely manner, and it really made the process smooth, and so. So like that, anything, Jared, or?
I just want to reiterate to George, it's, often it's like, that's why I'm coming in to perform the audit, and there's a business manager switch, just because he's been there the years, but those Mike and Jim work well with us. If we have a question, Mike will answer it for us, and we just play, hey, you know, this is where it is, and Jim as well, and can ask, or Barry, to, 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 the audit, occur this year.
And so, does anyone have any questions or comments or anything?
In the report, does it have what the, what the cost of the district is to have the audit done yearly? Does it list it on one of these pages?
It is not.
All right. Anything after that?
Yes.
Okay. And, and Mr. Clarence, a good question, because later on, later on in the agenda, there is a motion to extend the audit for, for Zokowski-Axterrod for additional three years. So the current audit that ended June thirty, two thousand nineteen, the cost of the audit was eighteen thousand five hundred. The extension will be fiscal year end in June two thousand twenty, twenty-nine, twenty-two, it would go up to eighteen thousand nine sixty, an increase of four hundred and sixty dollars, two and a half percent, which is pretty standard for audits. A price of an audit, eighteen thousand, for a thirty-three million dollar budget, and the number of GASB reported, is actually a pretty fair price.
Does the district put that out for bid? I mean, not that I'm not, but is there documentation that's provided?
It is not, it is not a, I think that has to be put out, and then you can do a request for proposals. I think this is the third year that Zokowski-Axterrod, there used to be a company, a different accountant, about four years ago, and.
Yeah, we put him out for bid at that one time, yeah, it's not for bid, we asked for proposals at that point in time, and we did switch at that point to this company. Because of cost?
No, because they stopped doing school audits, honestly, they had done our audit for years and years and years, but because, I think, just their company in and of itself no longer was doing school audits, and we were like one of the last school districts that they did at that point in time, they kind of gave up the school audit business, so.
Very, very pleased with the working relationship with the auditors. Outside the audit, I've asked Hope Lee to do additional questions regarding accounting changes in some GASB reporting requirements that will be required for the next year, and they're very helpful, and useful, and helping us prepare our books internally for what, what some, like, GASB seventy-five needs updated, and again, eighty-three for next year, are coming into play. So we're putting our, our, our internal records in order, in order for, for those.
So all those questions and your communications are all included in the clinical part, which you live on. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is all I have, just under two written reports.
Under budgets, finance, typically, we break these, we just read one through three, but since this is a working session, we're going to go through them one at a time. Approved the board minutes, if there are any questions. So I'm just going to read them, and then if anybody has any questions, please keep up. Approved the treasurer's report for November two thousand nineteen. Approved the treasurer's report for December two thousand nineteen. Approved the general fund bills for payment in the amount of nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand seven thirty-five twenty-eight. Cafeteria bills in the amount of eighty-two thousand nine twenty-seven sixty-seven. Construction fund bills for payment in the amount of thirty-one thousand eight hundred and eighty, and payroll in the amount of two million three hundred and fifty-two thousand three hundred and twenty-nine dollars, for a total disbursement of three million four hundred and fifty-four thousand eight seventy-one and ninety-five cents. Any questions? Secretary's report.
Executive session, we're held on dates Tuesday, January seventh, two thousand twenty, before the meeting for personal litigation.
Nothing under professional employees. Classified employees approved Susan Williams to be added to the list of substitute custodians. Recommended approval to adjust the nurse assistant rates as presented. You want to go with any information about that, or?
We can't commit the word, like, to, you want to, Jim, you want to talk about that?
Just briefly, in doing an analysis or study of the labor positions throughout the district, it was noticed that the nurse assistants, which the district has three nurse assistants, have not received an increase since the fourteen, fifteen school year. In the current day, we pay fifteen dollars an hour. In conversation with neighboring school districts, the going rate for, for a nurse assistant or a health assistant is somewhere between eighteen and twenty-one fifty an hour. These, these individuals are either NLPN, or, or, it is becoming difficult to continually retain these individuals. So my recommendation and suggestion to the board is for the remainder of the nineteen, or nineteen, twenty school year, bump the rate from fifteen dollars an hour to sixteen fifty an hour, and then on July first, move it from sixteen fifteen, sixteen fifty an hour to eighteen dollars per hour. Just to get it in line, and this is particularly in one of the only groups of individuals in the district that have not received an increase in the past three, four years.
And if we receive order approval, then obviously, that additional dollar fifty an hour for those three employees would be budgeted in the twenty twenty-one school year.
Do you believe you receive benefits from the district?
They do not.
Any other questions? Activity, reporters following the coaches, any questions?
I have a question under that. For the softball?
Yes.
Those, the junior varsity, are they going to be able to make all the practices?
Practice and the games, both of them?
Yeah, is it a paid position?
Yes, both of them are paid, a little over thirty-eight, that's thirty-eight sixty.
Okay.
And, you're talking about both coaches?
Yes.
Well, one's a teacher, that's not a problem, and the other one, when I spoke, yes, on time for practice and the games.
Okay.
Thirty-eight sixty is the supplemental, it's the same thing.
So the junior varsity coach, I mean, they're all going to be able to make the practices and the games?
Yes.
I'm asking?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Approved the hockey girls soccer boosters to use the high school gymnasium for a youth soccer tournament on Saturday, March seventh, two thousand twenty. They will pay the custodian cost and will provide proof of insurance and workers. Questions? Employee care for Coons, as the winter cards sponsor. Under district operations, awarded bid for diesel fuel for two thousand twenty-one school, school year to Port Petroleum, who, the Westmore NIU, identified as the lowest responsible bidder at a rate of two dollars and three point eight cents a gallon. Questions? Motion to approve the audit extension for the year's end in June thirty, two thousand twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. And a motion to accept the resignation of Linda Harvey as Swidely Township tax collector effective December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen.
As a sign of, I'd like to publicly thank Linda Harvey for her work as tax collector over the year. Now that she's taken on that new role, she, she has, she has made sure we got the money we deserve over in, not in a timely manner, so if we can publicly thank her, I think that's appropriate.
Yeah, we wish her luck in her new venture. Board reports, WIU seven, and WIU seven legislative council, Steve?
No report, the first meeting for the year won't be till January twenty-eighth, so.
CWCTC committee, Sandy?
No report, that they changed their monthly meeting to the twenty-second of January at seven o'clock.
And the PSBA report?
No report.
Committee reports, athletic committee, Mr. Novy?
The athletic committee has met twice, once in December, right before Christmas, I believe it was, and once last week. We've met in regards to varsity soccer coach and varsity football coach. We've begun the process for both of those positions, however, no decision has been made at this point, the process is still ongoing.
And with old business, discussion of the baseball turf question from December workshop meeting.
If you go down to number three, that is, oh, the turf question, go ahead, Jim, you want to cover the turf? I was thinking about the softball, or the baseball field.
And, I'm, I'm opening the table up for discussion. Based on the discussion at the December meeting, Mr. Evans had reached out to some local athletic directors and get their feedback regarding turf for baseball, and we, baseball and softball. I reached out to a local turf company, a company called Shawl Turf, who currently, over the past summer, did work at Norwin, Willie Hills, Fox Chapel, Greensburg, Salem, and is currently doing turf work at Pen Trapper and Plum. Just to get a ballpark of the process and dollar amount of what it would take to get the field turf. He did start the conversation out, because when I started the conversation with him, he did start the conversation out. If you're going to think only baseball, you're probably going to get a knock on the door from Title Nine. You need to consider baseball and softball at the same, same time, and he's speaking from experience in his work, not only in the state of Pennsylvania, but there up and down the East Coast. They said on average, a baseball field runs about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and ten square feet, and he's using current numbers for what he's doing up at Plum. To do an entire baseball field is a rough number, and this includes field turf, and then you have to do the study for the field base and the drainage. You're talking for an entire field roughly around seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. If you're talking just the infield, which he says it's infield up to the fence line, which is basically the dugout, you're averaging roughly about twenty-four thousand. If you're going to think only baseball, you're probably going to get a knock on the door from Title Nine. You need to consider baseball and softball at the same, same time. And he's speaking from experience in his work, not only in the state of Pennsylvania, but there up and down the East Coast. They said on average, a baseball field runs about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and ten square feet. And he's using current numbers for what he's doing up at Plum. To do an entire baseball field is rough number, and this includes field turf. And then you have to do the study for the field base and the drainage. You're talking for an entire field roughly around seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. If you're talking just the infield, which he says it's infield up to the fence line, which is basically the dugout, you're averaging roughly about twenty-four thousand square feet. Turf, drainage, field base, roughly about two hundred and seventy thousand. For softball, infield, fence line, usually runs between eleven thousand, five hundred square feet to thirteen thousand square feet, you're talking roughly a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So in summary, if you're looking baseball only infield, two hundred and seventy, softball only infield, a hundred and thirty. So to do baseball and softball, you're probably talking a minimum of four hundred thousand dollars. If you're looking to do the full field turf, drainage, field base, you're talking roughly close to one point two million dollars. Now, the guy I talked to basically said, depending on how or the direction the board wants to go, he's willing to meet, Mr. Evans and I, open the fields and get true measurements of the field. And he basically had a cost per square foot, if we want to go that route. But he also wants to be careful because he will also be one that would want to bid on the project. So he doesn't want to overstep his boundaries, but at least it would give us the actual square footage that we could.
And we would have to, if we would have to stack together and do all of that work before we would do anything from there.
And that's where he wants to step away from it, because he doesn't want any in on this.
How many home games are played on that field? Talk, do you know?
Yeah, on baseball, we have softball.
Baseball.
Baseball. We're talking, and again, exhibition games can be right out and not.
Ballpark game?
Ballpark ten.
Okay.
Ten and ten.
Okay.
And then JV's too, so.
Okay, alright.
Ten, maybe six JV's.
Do the, do the films have to be done the same year? If you were to do them, would you phase in one, like do one one year and one the next?
I sit on the board now with the National Due Rule Title Nine. And the one example was Norman. Norman did their baseball field first, okay, and this was an example. They did their baseball field and softball field the following year. The reason why Tyler and I accepted that was because the baseball field was considered not playing. So they, right before they did it, they called Title Nine, yeah, that forward, and then they got softball the following year. That was the exception.
It was an emergency situation.
Emergency situation, it could down figure, I don't bring up. So, yeah.
Any other questions?
My comment is, I really truly, we are in two, this is two contract negotiations going on this year. To even be considering this is, is a mistake. That's my opinion.
I want to thank publicly Jim Meyer. He did a great job. I call the schools, and he also did his homework. I want to thank Jim in public.
Yeah, nice job.
I think right now the board was just looking into costing and see what it would cost. And we may go the route of France through our state repatriation settlement. Those are other options. Under number two for old business, Kenny, with picnic day auctions for twenty-twenty-one.
So the board had asked me to go back to Hettie Wood and speak to them, and I have done that in the past before. But I did approach Hettie Wood regarding looking for dates during the course of May that would be put into the calendar as being day off, and we would move forward. In the year twenty-twenty-one, those days that you see on there are the only dates that they have available to accommodate us. All, there's four that are on a Saturday and one that is on Memorial Day. Other than that, our current date is set for June of twenty-twenty-one. If the board would wish us to go and do a Saturday dating day, we can do that. But it would not take a school day, and they do not have any of the days. I can tell you that in May, Hettie Wood is rolling in. So if you want it to be a Saturday, that's okay.
That's what we're changing.
So I just need to have those. If we want to make some kind of change that Hettie Wood gave, I do need to let them know. They do this like a year in advance. It's been torturous for a couple of years, actually.
How about we look at twenty-twenty-two? I still, I still think.
I can ask, well, twenty-twenty-two.
We, 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 for Memorial.
Memorial Day.
I can try for twenty-twenty-two.
Even until twenty-twenty-two, I think the kids don't want to go to Hettie Wood on a Saturday. I think they want to miss school.
I mean, so.
Yeah.
So I, I can go back, and I'll, 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 year twenty-twenty-two, I'll go back.
I think we just keep our current year in June, and then we just keep looking for.
Will it be two years?
Two years, even if it's two years.
So it will be this year and the next year, and it will be the following year. Okay, I'll try.
At least we'll have an option. Discussion of the tree line and the baseball field recommendations.
So in, in your package, there is an attachment, so Mr. Dvajek at the meeting in December had requested some information about removing trees up at the baseball field. If you look in that attachment, there are two pictures. It does show the tree line by the bleachers. If you can pull that attachment up and take a second to get that pulled out. It shows the tree line of the bleachers. In the spring of this past year, we did remove, if you look at those two pictures, we did remove five trees and two trees from behind where the bleachers were, were set. We dropped those trees back there because they were an impediment to the people sitting in the bleachers and weren't appropriate. So we did take those down. Unfortunately, we still have a number of underbrush in that area. So in looking at the options of what to do about those trees, and we put over page two, we have a couple of different options. We have option one and we have option two. Option one, if you see an aerial view of that area up there, option one would be removal of trees. So you see that area there, and that area there is, give or take, the square footage is pretty expansive. Part of the problem when you look at taking trees out in an area that expansive, it does require special things state regulation wise because of the drainage. So if you wanted to look at removing those trees, it would require some plumbing, it would require some specifications drawn by an architect. Because of the earth disturbances, we would have to do a site erosion study for that. Obviously, removing all those trees and doing those different studies would be a pretty extensive cost. So that would be option number one. Option number two, and this would be the option we would recommend, and I think that it would, would do two things. I think it would solve a lot of the questions that you had, Mr. Johnson. And I also think it would be a benefit to our cross-country team. So op, option number two would be doing something which is called forestry mulching. And forestry mulching is you bring in a big piece of equipment that will go and do all of that underbrush in that area underneath the trees. The cost to rent that machine and have a company do it, give or take, is about thirty-five hundred dollars a day. And what we could do there is we would do that whole back area. If you look on the picture on the right, that's an example of an area that having forestry mulched before and after. So the left picture is an area prior to doing that forestry mulching, and the right picture is an area once that's cleared out. So that would take care of a lot of that undergrowth that's up by those fences. Our recommendation would be to do that, as well as, if you look at the picture on the left, it shows you the area that we would forestry mulch, which directly behind the bleachers. But then it also goes through and does that same type of forestry mulching across that cross-country trail. Because the cross-country trail, we do our best to take care of that, but, but it is something that could use that type of, of mulching. So what happens with the forestry mulching? It mulches the material. It doesn't take it away, it kind of lays it down. If you look at the picture, almost as a bed, almost like a park-type atmosphere. Thirty-five hundred dollars would be for one day, and then if it was for an additional day, it would, it would be about seven thousand dollars. But like I said, I think that that second option would be the better option, kind of give us, you know, more advantage or benefit, because you're able to do both of those areas, not just serve the ground or the site erosion, and still get the desired of what you're looking for. So based on that comment in December, that is where we are. If option number two is something that you're interested in doing, I can tell you that work can be done in the wintertime if the ground is dry and frozen. If it was like it was Christmas week, when it's fifty-eight or sixty degrees and wet, that piece of equipment is fairly heavy.
Might.
But if the dry, ground is dry and frozen, and if we can get the contractor to schedule, we would be able to get that done in the winter or sometime in the spring if the ground is sufficient to do that.
I have a question.
Sure.
Would it be a conflict if you had a group of volunteers that would want to go up and do, do some work there?
I don't know.
Versus having an actual contractor go in?
I don't know that you want to put somebody responsible.
I'm just, I'm just asking.
I mean, that would be something I would think we would want to do. That's a pretty big area.
I think.
And that's how you.
That's correct.
I think you're saying just the pathway that, obviously, the track doesn't run the whole way all through that, right? They're just, they have a path that goes through there, cross-country, I mean.
That path that's on there that's kind of highlighted, it looks like, almost like a half circle, that's the path that goes all the way through there. It's a pretty expansive path.
Got it.
And we clear it now the best that we can, but it's not, it's not, this would allow it to be cleared clean down and allow us to better take care of it, kind of moving forward. This hasn't been done in this district as long as I've been here. So it'd be thirty-five hundred for one day, and depending on how much we get through, how much the contractor we get through in one day would determine, you know, if you need another half day, or maybe they would get part of the cross-country done in a day. It's hard to count exactly the amount of time. We would obviously make them hurry.
Was that just one, the contractor, I mean?
We would, we would go out, we would go out and compare and do that. You know, the, the amount of the cost of it doesn't fall under the, what we need for bids and proposals. But even with lower ticketed items, we do always go out and get through quotes regardless, as a district, just to make sure we're getting the appropriate price. So, but if that is something that you guys are interested in doing, in order to kind of get going, get on the schedule and see, we would want to add a motion as that other board agenda goes forward. So I would just need to know the rule of the board with regards to that.
Bring it up for both of you.
Option two, I would assume.
Yeah, the cheaper option.
And other than that, that is all I have for old business.
Can I back? I have a question under the bills. Is that possible?
Under old business?
Sure. I just have a question under the bills. It's under athletics, and it's for Coach Polo shirts, five hundred and seventy-six dollars. Do you know what, you may know what that was for?
That's under supplies, that would be for workers, et cetera. Should have been under supplies.
It's under Century Sports?
Oh, Century Sports, that would be.
Coach Polo shirts, five seventy-six.
That would be for boys and girls basketball shirts, the coaches. If it's Century, it's for coaches.
Boys and girls, for the whole district or the high school or?
No, the high school.
High school?
High school basketball.
How many shirts do you get them?
Whenever, they were like, there was probably about ten shirts. They were probably like, Nike's a little bit more expensive, about fifty-some dollars. And that was in their, in their budget. If it came from Century, that was basketball.
Okay.
Or under new business? Anything under new business?
I do have one motion under new business. I'm going to read it, and then if you can't hear over the, go ahead, read it. Okay, so there is one motion under new business. It is, reads as follows. Motion to accept letters of interest from qualified candidates for participation in the board budget and finance committee at open public budget meetings as advertised and scheduled. Can, and I'll reread this in a fast, so everybody can understand. Candidates should have experience in the area of business budget slash finance. Deadline for letters of interest is January twenty-first. All right, go read it one more time. Motion to accept letters of interest from qualified candidates for participation at open public budget meetings as advertised and scheduled. Candidates should have experience in the area of business budget and finance, deadline is January twenty-first. So I make that on the floor as a motion.
Just to make sure the public's aware, those are volunteer positions of communities, some would like to provide their assistance and expertise in this. You want a motion tonight?
Yeah. Yeah, you want to do a thank you to that like January twenty-first, so you and your people enough time.
So we need a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion, I'll be clear in a second, second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Solicitors report?
No report from public for this issue.
Citizen comments?
I just have two questions. Clarity, district operations. My name's Chris Boucher from Rossdale. The word for the diesel bid, for the fuel, is that a savings on our transportation contract, like it's been in the past?
Yes, any, any value, any field can buy under three dollars a threshold.
Okay, it's still three dollars, so.
So the amount that, that we're looking on the board, that's two point oh three eight exactly, roughly about a half cent right there.
Okay, so we're looking at close to a hundred thousand, I mean, I'm assuming about a hundred thousand in our savings.
That's correct.
And three, motion to accept the resignation of Linda Harvey. Will the school be taking on that responsibility?
No, I can tell you how, how it will happen. Swigley Township is the governing tax body. They will make a motion on their board agenda, hopefully the third Wednesday of this month, to appoint the tax collector, whether it be Keystone or Citizen. And then once they make that motion, then it'll come back to us as a school board, and then this school will make a motion to appoint that same person as tax collector. So in the meantime, though, since Linda is not yet tax collector as of December thirty-first, all of her tax collector information is being forwarded to the Westmore County Tax Bureau. So, so those are still being collected and trust that time that somebody is appointed, those monies will get here as they should. But right now it's being sent and directed to the Westmore County Tax Bureau until the township and the district make those motions, which should be in the next couple.
Okay, it would be an individual, not a company?
It could, it will be, it could be either or. It can be either.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I have a question about that. So depending on what they do, the, what would the cost be to the district? But it varies depending on if there was, say, a collection agency versus an individual. How, how would that affect us?
Gary, can you answer that question? Nancy's question is, what will the charges be from? Is there difference in charges with a group versus an individual, like a tax collector?
That would be negotiated normally, but it can exceed what would have been done by a previously for an elected person. So those fees can't be any more than they were being paid previously.
Okay.
So they could be less.
Could be less.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we, like, all that, we, like, this.
Nancy, big sneeze, no way, no egg. My questions are directed to the business manager, and that we're getting close to now budget time. I have a couple of questions I wanted to ask you. And if, I, I understand that you probably don't have the exact answers right now, but I would appreciate that at the next school board meeting, if you could get back to me and give me the answers. In the last several years, as far as the monies that we get from the state, say like two years ago, how much normally is the increase from year to year as far as the percentage? Do you have, do you have any, of general ballpark?
I can tell you, I just looked at the, the basic ed subsidy increased by, I believe, somewhere around nine to two thousand. But I'll give you a three or five year history.
Okay, like the percentage, like if it goes up, like?
It's probably less than two percent.
Around two percent?
Yeah, that's just the basic ed, but I would be better, I'll break down basic ed, I'll break down special ed, and some of the other state funding that we get.
Okay, because I would, I would like to see what it, what it's been like in the last couple of years to see if there's any type of pattern. As far as.
It's not very good.
Generally, it's part, it's part of my budget process that I will share with the board and the general public. Generally, it's part, part of my budget process that I share with the board and the general public is like a five-year history of different types of funding. State fund is one of them and I need to categorize the areas that we're just going to fund. Basic ed subsidy, retirement subsidy, social security subsidy, special ed, maintenance. I'll, I'll go through all of them. But I'll, I'll put something together, as you were saying before, I had something together to respond to your answer particularly.
Anywhere for that. Yeah, and also the difference between local, local revenue versus state revenue. Is it fifty-fifty, forty-sixty?
I can tell you based on the audit that was presented tonight, forty-four percent of our, our revenue is local. Fifty-four percent is state and the difference in the profit percent, two percent is state.
Okay, so my, my next question is, as far as the monies that we get from the state, okay, is there a certain type of formula that this is based on, like how many students there are, the?
Correct.
Okay, and does it also depend on like, I mean, say like for example, if Yawk has two thousand students and Norman had two thousand students, would the subsidy be the same or is there other factors that are?
Other factors, geographic scarcity, they call it a five-year snapshot out here. It's called ABMs, which is the membership, which is basically how it tends to cool. All those factors.
Social economic.
Social economic, poverty values, it is.
So is there a certain formula that, that you, that you have?
I, the best thing I can tell you, if you really want to, if you go onto the PDE website, click on school, Department of Education, School Finances, you'll be able to find the current year, the nineteen twenty, basic ed formula there. And it has all five hundred school districts in the formula, okay?
I think the numbers have a statement figure of formulas.
The formula has a lot of different variables in it. Unfortunately, there's a false floor in the formula. So part of it is on the wealth in the district or free reduced lunch, so to speak, is what they, how they calculate it. The wealthy districts, there's a false floor, the twenty percent is the lowest. And some of the wealthy districts, actually, if they ran the formula without that false floor, would come in at two, three percent for the wrong portion. So wealthy districts that already have enough funding to get more money because they receive additional funds that really if they didn't have that false floor, they wouldn't, they wouldn't get. A district like the Yawk school district is somewhere in the middle. You don't get some of the benefits for being highly poor and having some of the needs. So when you look at the formula, it's an interesting formula, how it is, and it's handled. It's been litigated several times over the last thirty years to try to get that formula changed. Unfortunately, that, it never comes to.
So it doesn't matter if you have like representation of your government as far as your state representative, your state senator, they couldn't bring home any more bacon because it's basically based on a formula?
Okay.
Basic ed, special ed.
Okay, those, the federal funding, does that change? I mean, that, I'm sure that's probably a very small amount of the budget.
It goes down virtually almost every year just by a couple thousand dollars.
Yeah, it, it, some of the factors, Mr. Matt, I've referred to your poverty level, your free reduced lunch number, taken to your federal number. So as they change, our allocations change. Again, if there was a cut at federal, it was a total of odd amounts, we see it that. But Dr. Sartre, we've seen some dips in half of the tax included. It has all form of a driven muscle.
Now what percentage would you say the federal funds are of the budget?
About two percent.
About two percent. And do they have to be earmarked for certain programs?
Okay, they have to submit a separate budget for each federal program that we get. And you have to spend accordingly.
Okay, so they cannot be just thrown into the general fund and be used at the discretion of the school district and has to be earmarked for certain things on the federal.
We are audited on that, we do so many years, we just had our audit last year. For federal.
Okay, and then one other question. Dealing with the bond issue, are the payments that, that have to be paid out to pay back the debt, do they come out twice a year?
They come out, the bulk of it comes out, when I say the bulk, the principal of it comes out, I believe, in October.
Okay.
Like in October, first of those coming here is the bulk of it. The second half of the interest comes out in March.
In March.
Yeah, which is very, we got a debt service payment, I think about two point five million, about five hundred thousand in balance in March. Either day, roughly two day comes out in the middle of October.
Okay, then one, one of the, on, on the bond issue though, for like next, this, this coming budget, will there be an increase in the amount of payback than was from the previous year as far as how the bond schedule is set up?
I will provide you the bond schedule payments for next year, if you don't mind.
Yeah, yeah, I, I.
Yeah, I can give you the debt service payment schedule. It will show you the amount per year. To speak whether it's going to be higher or lower, I don't have that.
Okay, so you need to look at it for next year thinking, okay, we might need an additional fifty thousand dollars or something for payment.
I have it in my office, but I don't want to speak in public.
Okay.
I did look at it, but I don't want to speak in public.
The state requires when you're going through financing to keep a bond issuance, your payments relatively flat. There are a few occasions where it commits you to have a spike for certain reasons. But normally what happens is if right now, unless you're increasing your debt service tremendously, normally it's added on to the end because they want your debt service payments to be equal every year. They don't want a large increase, a drop, a large increase, a drop. They want to keep them flat. So normally what happens is they do a wraparound to make sure that when you find those ups and downs, they take those and make it a flat, where it's always consistent. So our debt service here, because it's worked on, is relatively flat. There may be a slight increase or a slight decrease, but it's relatively flat staying the same.
But I guess if you have those several bond issues, you could have bond issues that, an over bond issue might have a higher debt service, that's what I was getting at.
You may have that, but, but then you have when you did a new debt service, the state requires you to come in and again, if it, if it looked like this before that debt service because something got paid off, they would require the, the financing group to go in and pick those places where there are spikes or drops in it and fill it in, so to speak. So you would see your debt service, if you did it on a graph, if it was like this right now because the payments after you did a new cert, a debt service, it would be consistent. It would take those peaks and valleys out. That's a requirement of D C E D, that it is consistent. They don't want to see any government entity, not just school districts, come in one year and have a million dollar debt service, the next year have a three million dollar debt service payment, the following year have a, you know, one point five and then go back up to four. They want them to be consistent and that they require that to get the approval when all debts, all the funding's got the approval of the state. When that gets sent in, they need to get, show that it's going to be a consistent amount.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So just in summary for next week, I'll, I'll give you a state finding by five year history. I'll give you the local, federal, state breakdown, district by, which I believe is forty-four, fifty-four, two percent. I'll give you a copy of the basic ed formula, if you go to the PDE website, it'll be on there. And then I'll give you the bond issue payments for like the next five years.
Okay, thank you.
On that sheet, you put the website address.
Motion to adjourn. Time is eight twenty-three. Second. Eighty seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Mr. Evans?